Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of May 27, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball, absent. Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
Present.
Councilmember Grant.
Present.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Present.
Councilmember Heike, or some, excuse me, Mayor Heigl.
I'm one. I'm here. Will you all please join me in a pledge of allegiance? Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Thursday, June 19, 2025, is Juneteenth Day in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, a motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation, council members.
All votes have been cast. To acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Thursday, June 19, 2025, is Juneteenth Day in the city of Norman. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1883, declaring that all persons held as slaves shall be free, and whereas on June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas June 19, known as Juneteenth, and also called Emancipation Day, is the oldest known celebration which started in 1866, commemorating the announcement of the abolition of slavery in the state of Texas, and in remembrance of all, of the day all remaining slaves acquired their freedom in the United States of America. And whereas on June 17, 2021, Juneteenth was signed into law declaring it a national holiday. And whereas 2025's national theme, A Reckoning, reclaiming the past, remembering Black voices, reshaping the future, calls us to confront historical truths, honor the voices and contributions of Black communities, and commit to building a more just and inclusive future. And whereas the Juneteenth Festival will take place on Thursday, June 19, 2025, in the city of Norman at Reeves Park, providing a community celebration that fosters inclusion and unity, bringing together visitors, families, and local leaders in honor of this important national holiday. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in the city of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating this important holiday while continuing to strive towards full equality. Pastor Ford and Pastor Wilson join me up in the front, please.
Well, I am. You're right, I'm a pastor, pastors talk. Well, mayor, council members, and all who are in attendance, thank you for this recognition. We appreciate what you're doing as civic leaders and recognizing it's important. Date in U.S. history, it seems to me at least that there are some efforts being made to erase part of our history, and I'm grateful that you guys are not doing that. And we want to continue to remember the things that have happened in our country, good, bad, and otherwise. And I would like to acknowledge, I'm Terry Wilson, pastor of Everlasting Life Baptist Church, the founding pastor there. Our church has been in existence since 1985, and this year in September, the 27th of that month, we will celebrate our 40th church anniversary. And even before then, we'd like to welcome you to come to our fellowship, any of you, you're welcome, 925 East Brooks is where we're located, any of you may come as well. We're glad to have you attend our worship service. Again, thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Michael Ford. I'm the pastor of Community Missionary Baptist Church, and I too would like to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city of Norman for acknowledging and recognizing the significance of this day to us. I grew up during the time of segregation, so I know what it's like to have to deal with division firsthand, not being able to go into restaurants because of my color. We, or, community was the first Black church in Norman, Oklahoma. On April the 27th, we celebrated our 45th year. And the reason this church was founded was because the people, the students, and those that worked in this area could not worship in this area. They had to travel off to be able to worship. But God saw fit to use his servant, the late Reverend Jesse Woodford Jr. and some other dedicated people, to found this church because he saw a need and he filled that need. And we're still here today because of the grace of God and according to his purpose and plan, committed to the things of God. So we invite you to come and celebrate with us, Juneteenth. And we give you an open invitation to come to Community Missionary Baptist Church and worship with us and celebrate the love of God with us. Thank you again, and we have a vacation Bible school going on right now, so we have to leave.
All right. Item number two, a proclamation proclaiming June 16, 2025 through June 22, 2025, is Pollinator Week in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion, uh, excuse me, a motion to accept the proclamation.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. Motion on the floor is to accept receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast. Receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming June 16 through June 22, 2025, as Pollinator Week in the city of Norman. Whereas pollinators such as bees, butterflies, birds, and other wildlife play an important role in supporting agriculture and maintaining healthy natural systems. And whereas pollinate, pollination is a key natural process that contributes to crop production, healthy ecosystems, and the availability of many foods enjoyed by our residents. And whereas strong pollinator populations support farming, gardening, and land stewardship practices that benefit both private landowners and the broader community. And whereas approximately three-fourths of flowering plants and over one-third of our food crops rely on pollinators to reproduce, making them essential to food security and agricultural productivity. And whereas pollinator habitats face challenges from a variety of environmental factors, and supporting their health is part of good land and resource stewardship. And whereas National Pollinator Week is a time to recognize the importance of pollinators and encourage voluntary, community-driven efforts to support healthy habitat and responsible land management. And whereas the city of Norman supports partnerships that promote good stewardship of our natural resources and protect the integrity of our environment. So now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim June 16 through June 22, 2025, as Pollinator Week with the city of Norman, and encourage residents to learn more about the role of pollinators and how we can support them. Ms. Michelle Lautenbach, would you come down?
Of course I want to say something, right? Anyway, hi. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Thank you so much for recognizing Pollinator Week and the important role of these vital pollinators. They're vital, right? You've read the proclamation. One out of every three bites of food that we take, we get because of these pollinators, right? But they're not just vital for supporting our food systems and environment, right? They're also important for maintaining a wider balance in the natural world. It's really cool. And their tireless efforts, of course, support our ecosystem health, they boost plant diversity, but they also beautify and enrich our shared spaces that we enjoy, you know, so everyone can love them. But beyond that ecological impact, they do more. They also give us a quiet nod to that connection that we need to community, to nature, to healing and growth. Time spent with pollinators like bees actually has been shown to improve mental wellness and ease stress, to actually provide meaningful structure to people who are, who are navigating emotional recovery, you know? And that's, that's pretty important. And one inspiring example of this actually is our collaboration with Steve Esim of True Bee Removal. He's the founder of Warriors to Bees, and this is a program that trains veterans and first responders in beekeeping and bee removal, and it provides this pathway to healing and growth. He also maintains our honeybee hives at Leaf, so I recommend everybody check out Leaf. And he also partners with us to provide education to our residents, so it's really a great collaboration with this fellow. Our commitment, Norman's commitment to pollinators is actually visible across town too, right? We see it. We see it in the vibrant pollinator pockets and habitat that's been created around town. Look at these streetscapes, right? Main Street, James Garner, Porter. If you haven't seen it lately, it is amazing right now and bloom. The park plannings, we have them at William Morgan and Prairie Creek, Cherry Creek Park, Bentley Park, others. The habitat installation at the Roundabout, the interchange at Highway 9 and I-35, there, did you know we have habitat installation at Coquerrill and Comanche? These places are bursting with color and native plants and pollinators hard at work for us. It's awesome. So Pollinator Week is actually a great time, right? The perfect time to celebrate these efforts and to invite the community to get involved. And so I do, I invite residents to get involved, and whether that's planting native flowers, skipping pesticides, or just learning more. And guess what? Guess where you can do that? You can learn more about our pollinating friends on greennorman.org, so please, check it out. Check it out. During Pollinator Week, we'll be posting several fun and interesting pollinator facts to the Facebook webpage, Facebook page and our webpage. So I hope that residents will follow along and join the conversation. Get involved. But thank you really for your support, and also thank you for helping make Norman a place where pollinators and people can thrive. Good night.
All right. Next is a proclamation proclaiming June 29 through June 5, 2025, as Natural History Week in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
Motion.
Second.
A motion, and second, a motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming June 29 through June, July 5, as 20, excuse me, July 5, 2025, as Natural History Week in the city of Norman. Whereas the city of Norman is home to the Sam Noble Oklahoma Museum of Natural History, one of the nation's premier university-based institutions for the study and celebration of our natural and cultural heritage and the legislated Natural History Museum of the state of Oklahoma. And whereas fossil holotype and only known specimen of, here we go, Aquilopps americanus. Aqualops, thank you. I added some extra syllables. A small early, Seratopsin dinosaur from the early, you ought to read this thing. Early Cretaceous was discovered and described by Sam Noble Museum Paleontologist Dr. Richard Siffeli, Siffeli, and Dr. Matt Whedle, Whedle, among others, and has been proudly displayed in the Hall of Ancient Life at the Sam Noble Museum. And where aqualops will be featured in the upcoming major motion picture Jurassic World Rebirth is, rebirth as, as appearing on Dr. Pepper cans and forthcoming Mattel and Lego toy lines, bringing national and international attention to this remarkable fossil. And whereas this spotlight on aqualops provides an extraordinary opportunity to celebrate Oklahoma's rich paleontol, paleontological history and the vital role of institutions like the Sam Noble Museum in preserving and interpreting our natural history. And whereas the Sam Noble Museum serves not only as a repository of scientific discovery, but also as a center for education, outreach, and inspiration for future generations of scientists and citizens. And whereas the record, recognition of aqualops on such a prominent stage is a testament to the achievements of Oklahoma's scientific community and underscores the global significance of the museum's research and creative contributions. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim June 29 through July 5, 2025, is National History Week in the city of Norman, Oklahoma, and in the city of Norman, and encourage all residents to visit the Sam Noble Oklahoma Museum of Natural History to celebrate our prehistoric heritage and to support the ongoing efforts to preserve and share Oklahoma's unique place in the story of life on earth. I'd like to recognize Dr. Janet Brown to come down and accept this.
Well, thank you, mayor and city council members. I'm very proud to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Sam Noble Museum, Oklahoma's State Museum of Natural History. The museum's history began in 1899, when it was established by territorial legislation. This year, 2025, is our 126th anniversary. But 25 years ago, on May 1, 2000, we opened the doors of our new building to the people of Oklahoma. Truly, the 25th anniversary of the building would not have been possible without the generous support of the citizens of the city of Norman, which passed a $5 million bond issue in 1991. The museum's mission is deeply rooted in discovery, education, and stewardship, where we are dedicated to exploring the past, enriching the present, and inspiring a future where an understanding of natural and cultural history guides informed and responsible decisions. We are dedicated to preserving the collection of more than 10 million specimens and objects that we hold in trust for you, the people of Oklahoma. Although the museum holds many special and unique objects, this proclamation celebrates Aqualops americanus, which makes its movie debut on July 2 as Dolores. This amazing fossil, which was discovered by a team that included museum paleontologists, can only be seen at the Sam Noble Museum. We are looking forward to Natural History Week in the city of Norman, and we will be having a special celebration of Aqualops on July 17, on July 19. I invite you to these special celebrations and to all of our 25th anniversary events and activities that will be taking place through April of next year. Again, it is with great pleasure that I accept this proclamation. Thank you very much.
All right. Next item on the agenda is council announcements. I'll start over at eight.
Uh, no announcements for eight.
Council member?
Uh, just a couple would definitely encourage everybody to attend the Juneteenth Festival, the proclamation that we just had on Thursday, the 19th at 6:00 PM at Reeves Park. It is a really fun event, and it's, in my observation, has continued to grow every year in attendance, and there's just lots of great stuff there, and fireworks, and the music, and food, and it's just really wonderful, and in Ward 7, and of course, as I mentioned before, living next door to Reeves Park, it's always been wonderful to be able to just walk next door to attend. Evan knows, being able to attend all the events that we have at Reeves Park throughout the year, and Juneteenth Festival is, is one of them that I encourage everybody to attend. And then also just wanted to encourage everybody that to, if you weren't able to attend the budget adoption earlier today at two, you can watch the replay of the meeting on the city of Norman YouTube channel, and you can also watch any of the prior budget hearings and finance committee meetings that led up to the adoption of today's budget. If you have questions about the city's overall budget, how the city's funds are being spent, where it's all going, where it all comes from, two is really important. And so definitely encourage you to check that out if you didn't get a chance to see any of those meetings in person. So that's all I have for this time. Thank you.
Council member? Good evening. No announcements tonight. Council member?
No announcements this week, thank you.
Council member?
Yes. Good evening, Ward 4 in city of Norman. Happy Pride Month. I have some glowing news about the wrap-up of our Queer Joy Exuberant Exhibition that debuted at last month's art walk and continued throughout the month of May. We raised $2,612 from an OVAT grant and private funding. We paid out a collected total of $1,050 to artists, performers, and storytellers. Artists who showed with our Queer Joy exhibition sold works and also seeing sales were our vendors that we invited into the space. Of each, of the visitors at each of our events at Uncanny Art House, we had Norman community, of course, but we also drew people in from the OKC Metro, Tulsa, and Duncan. As a collective artist in Norman, we created this event to celebrate joy as resistance and provide uplifting educational opportunities for attendees and economic opportunities for artists. We wanted to share this joy beyond the initial exhibition, so one of our bespoke stuffed unicorns is hanging out on the stage of Opelousas for Pride Month, where drag queens and international acts like P. Lander Z. will have a touch more of the rainbow than they might have otherwise. On that note, I hope people will get out and enjoy this month's Second Friday Art Walk, which will be this Friday. One exhibition I will be making time to visit is Spiritual But Not Religious by Curtis Jones, and that will be at main site. Also, since we won't meet until June 24, I hope to see folks at Juneteenth, maybe doing activities throughout Pollinator Week or celebrating Sam Noble. Thank you.
Council member?
Thank you, mayor. Well, good evening, Ward 3 in Norman, Oklahoma. I thought everyone is doing all right tonight. So I have just a few announcements. So as councilmember Holman alluded to, we passed our fiscal year 26 budget today, and if hundreds of pages of a budget is intimidating, take a peek at or read the city manager's letter. It is full of the high-level information, and it'll give you, it's a good recap on everything that is within our budget. Then an update on Robinson Street. So as of right now, some roadway and pipe has been removed. There is still water, and so until it completely drains and dries up, and as long as we have great weather, which means no more rain, that way it can dry up, equipment and pipe can be laid and work can maybe get started around mid next week. So again, it's going to be dependent upon Mother Nature. And then as a gentle reminder on how to get ahold of me, I am not active on Disgracebook, I mean Facebook, so you can contact me on my city cellphone, which is 405-876-3143, or my city email, which is ward3, the number 3, at normanok.gov. So anyway, thank you all for being here.
Council member? Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Docket. Excuse me. This item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that item four through item 19 be placed on the Consent Docket. I'll entertain a motion to place items four through 19 on the Consent Docket.
Motion.
Second.
A motion, second. Motion on the floor is to place items four through 19 on the Consent Docket. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to place items four through 19 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion, and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the, on this Consent Docket? Motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the Motion to Place Items Four Through 19 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for comments?
Um, yes, sir. We will start with Princess Arianne, Ariane? Okay. Cynthia Rogers? Did Cynthia come back?
Don't see her.
Don't see her. Floyd Carroll?
He was there.
He walked out with the police chief.
Evan?
So much to say. Uh, thank you all for being here. I know you all are exemplary individuals for even showing up. I know you all are exemplary individuals for even showing up and taking on these responsibilities. Okay, the farmer's market is happening right now over at the well, of course, it'll happen this Saturday again. Uh, the pollinators, uh, here is just, a lot of people are afraid of pollinators, but this is what you do. If they start to come at you, don't talk to them, just start meeting them with their zzzzz, establish your zone, and zzzzzzzzzzzzz. It works, it works, I promise. Uh, okay, what else? Uh, okay, here's this thing, I had an idea for OU. What if we hosted a bowl game? We call it the Dust Bowl. I mean, it makes so much sense, we can get John Deere, some fertilizer companies to sponsor it, it could be huge. Um, oh, uh, the UNP, we're talking about a science museum? Let's do a Dust Bowl history museum. Norman history, Dust Bowl history, science, maybe a greenhouse in the, in the gym, you know, there's some big windows there. Uh, okay, what else? Okay, I think that we need to learn that, right? And this is something else that I think we all need. We all, I think, as adults, as people who exhibit whose responsibility is to be as concise and as critically, uh, capable of forming a decision that is enhancatory for everyone, understanding Einstein's relativity, it's just a fact, it is a fact that it always will be. Um, okay, this is something. Donald Trump, what a, what a hugely influential person in American culture right now. This is his book that he wrote, um, during The Apprentice, and I've kind of marked out a couple, a couple sections here. Okay, all right, so he says, get a prenuptial agreement, that's one of them. Cut out the middleman, teach your children the value of a dollar, hey, that's, you know, hard to go against that. Consider what the other side wants, be reasonable and flexible, trust your instincts. Uh, what else? Let your guard down, but only on purpose. Being stubborn is often an asset. This is the type of Donald that we need. This is the educator, the person who's saying, hey, this is what's made me successful, maybe it can help you.
Citizens of Norman, city council, friends far and wide, I want to speak to you about, something that's a little bit disconcerting to me. The city council voted to bring in a, an accomplished forensic auditor a couple years ago, and now they're a bit upset with what she's uncovered in the city of Norman. I really want to implore you to continue the FY '25 to FY '27 comprehensive audit plan that she put in place and presented to council, or the city council members, executive committee. Basically, in Shakira, we got exactly what we wanted. It's exactly what the job announcement asked us to provide, and to my knowledge, she has the chops to do the job. Now, quite a few of you are upset because she found some things that's not so nice in the city of Norman. I want to say that for every dollar she saves Norman residents in our tax dollars, she gets a 25% an hour raise for every $1 she saves us. I think we ought to keep her for the next 20 years to keep you people honest. And, you know, there's just been a lot of waste of city funds, wasteful contracts engaged in, by this council and its members over the years, funds diverted for the last 25 to 30 years out of some legacy funds coming through the grant monies, through the state and federal dollars, that are legacy funds to this city. There's areas in this city that still don't have gutters, sidewalks, lighting, that was promised 25 to 30 years ago. Where did the money go? Where'd it go? I'm asking you. I also think that, um, nobody's above the law, not anybody here, not anybody on council, not anybody working within the city offices, and for, to my knowledge, a forensic accountant is allowed to go into any office and ask any question, and doesn't have to come back and report to any single person in order to do their job, but to present the entirety...